Hello again all.
Hello. It looks like we're back. It says live again.
All right, apparently we're live again, Mr. President.
Okay, great. Mr. Harris, do we have any other scheduled public comment?
Uh, we do. We have, uh, Daniel Bard who was going to call in. And this, see whether or not this is Mr. Bard here.
Good evening, Mr. Bard.
I would say if anybody's listening to the screen or one of the other streams from this evening, they should make sure that's not playing so that we're not hearing endless feedback.
Mr. Bard, are you with us?
Mr. Bard.
Mr. President, I suggest that we, uh, if he calls in later, then we pick up at that point.
Yeah, Mr. Bard, if you're watching, um, we'll make time for you, uh, in the second public comment period, uh, with my apologies. Um, again, thank you to council for bearing with. Um, uh, reports requested by council, Mr. Harris.
We have none tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, reports of committees of council meetings. Uh, Public Safety Committee, Counselor Garcia Molina.
We did not meet, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Public Works Committee, Counselor Soto.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee did meet on, uh, July 6th. There were three items on the agenda. Administration Resolution Number 37-2020, Administration Resolution Number 38-2020, and Administration Bill Number 7-2020. We will discuss it when they come up on the agenda more thoroughly. That's all I have, Mr. President. Counsel President.
Thank you, Counselor Soto. Um, Economic Development Committee, Counselor Arroyo.
We did not meet, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Finance Committee, Counselor Baker.
Thank you. Uh, we did meet on July 6th. We discussed two resolutions that will appear later in this evening's agenda. First, a resolution required for Lancaster Higher Education Authority to enter into a funding project. Uh, this involves no taxpayer money and will eventually and ultimately be a part of a $10 million project to add dormitories for Thaddeus Stevens College of Technology. Additionally, a resolution that would allow us to amend our Water Fund Capital Improvement Plan to essentially reallocate funds from projects that are wrapping up into one that is just starting and now has a, has a more solidified budget. Again, we'll discuss those two further, uh, later on as they appear in the agenda. Additionally, as you and the rest of council are aware, the city is self-insured for workers' compensation costs. Each year, funds to cover those claims are paid, um, out of the administrative services budget, but they are included in the individual department budgets. So, on a quarterly basis, we shift money from the departments where injured workers have made claims to the administrative services budget to cover those costs. For the second quarter of this year, workers' compensation claims were made by city police officers and firefighters for a total of $51,681.15. Um, so that is the amount that would need to be moved from those department budgets to administrative services. Um, because this money is being moved between departments, this does require city council approval, so I make a motion to approve the second quarter workers' compensation transfer totaling, again, $51,681.15 as proposed.
Okay.
All right, there's been a motion and a second council comments. From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm muted. That concludes my report, President.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Uh, Community Planning, Counselor Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Um, we had six things on the agenda for committee meeting. Um, one we've addressed, that was, uh, Resolution 34, Recognizing Shield Master Pedro for her service to the community. We've addressed that already. There were, we have one, Administration Bill Number 6-2020, Authorizing Rezoning for a Site at North Queen Street, West Frederick, and North Queen, North Prince, I'm sorry, and, um, Resolution 31-2020, 32-2020, and 36-2020. Um, Sewage Plan Module, Sewage Planning Module for Warehouse District was 31. Uh, Module for 4 to 18 West King Street Project is 32, and 36, the Sewer Plan Module is for 661 South Marshall Street Project. And we also had, um, Resolution Number 33-2020, Authorizing Participation in a Municipal Assistance Program, all of which will be addressed later in the meeting.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Counselor Craig. Uh, finally Personnel, Counselor Diaz.
We did meet, but so there's nothing to discuss at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Diaz. Uh, those are our committee reports. So, uh, we move from there into our legislative agenda, beginning with the Heritage Conservation and Historic Districts. Um, we'll start with, uh, Item A, Penn Medicine Lancaster General Health, owner of 555 North Duke Street, Mr. Harris. Sorry, I'm doing your thing.
Sorry, Mr. President. Penn Medicine, Lancaster General Health, owner of 555 North Duke Street, proposes construction of a new two-story, three-level expansion of the Emergency Department facing North Duke Street, and that application was recommended for approval by the Historical Commission.
All right. Um, is there a motion?
Approved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Um, just as a, as a point of clarity, uh, this is, uh, an approval for the, uh, proposed construction. Um, I believe Mr. Sykes was it, uh, is here, uh, to represent, um, uh, Lancaster General. Um, I don't know, uh, I know we're also discussing their zoning, at least in terms of a first reading, um, but Mr. Sykes, I'll let you discuss the proposed construction plan for us.
Sure. Uh, more than happy to present, uh, to discuss it. It's, uh, let me back up and give you a little context. Uh, my firm is, uh, our company's called Perkins &amp; Will. Um, we're a leading national or international firm that does healthcare design all around the country. Uh, your emergency department in pre-COVID times was one of the top 15 busiest emergency departments in the country. Um, the work that they do there today has been astounding, uh, the staff and leadership there. I, I can't say any positive things about, uh, the hospital and the leadership. Um, right now, the intention of the project is to essentially give them more beds. If you think about the, um, as you drive by on Duke Street, there's the turnoff there, um, and all of this is in a Historical Commission presentation. Uh, we're essentially proposing to infill there on Duke Street, um, and then begin a process after that expansion of adding additional, approximately 40 beds to the emergency department, um, in order to accommodate what we still project to be an amazing amount of patient volume that they deal with for Lancaster City in particular. Uh, they really do provide an amazing community service, uh, for the city as well as the county, um, in terms of the emergency services that they provide. And, uh, this facility expansion is warranted in order to continue to support their mission.
Hello. Great, yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Sykes. No, are there? Go ahead, Mr. Sykes.
Oh, no, I just didn't know, uh, beyond the sort of details I gave there, um, I think everything else is probably in that application. Uh, I'll ask John Lyons to chime in just to see if I missed anything that he wanted to highlight.
No, Brian, your presentation was complete.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, John, thank you. Um, council comments specifically as regards the Historical Commission recommendation for the proposed construction.
I do have one thing, Council President. I'm still getting messages from people that are saying that it's dropping and coming, um, and they're questioning the legitimacy of the meeting itself because it can't follow along still.
Oh, and we've lost Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris is talking on that. Um, all right, if everybody would please bear with again.
And you need a couple days for advertising, correct? So, realistically, we're probably looking at like Tuesday next week? I think that's, yep. Yep. All right, yep.
All right, thank you. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay, y'all, um, who are still on the Zoom call, um, we are having major computer meltdown downstairs. Um, and Patrick and, uh, Bernie, uh, there's been a, a failure of the iPad and variety of other things, so Council President will give an update.
Okay, good evening all. Um, everybody who's here on council, everybody who is, who would theoretically be watching from the livestream or, or any part, uh, city staff, um, Mr. Sykes, uh, anybody who's called in, uh, to the, to the meeting. Um, it does not appear that we have the, uh, functional technological capacity this evening. Oh, are we, do we want to try it again? Okay, so, right, I'm gonna hold off on, on what I was just about to say. So, here's the status of things. Um, we, the livestream is now currently back up for the time being. I'm gonna hold off on, on what I was just about to say. So, if, did, um, can everybody mute themselves? It's not me. Great, thank you. Um, the livestream is back up for the time being. Uh, there appear to be persistent issues with the hardware, uh, as well as with the internet connectivity in the building. Um, if we cannot effectively broadcast a meeting to you, then you are not able to participate publicly. Um, and as Counselor Garcia Molina mentioned, uh, the legitimacy of the meeting is now in question. We are going to continue with the meeting for now. Should the issue reoccur or persist, um, I will ask council, uh, to vote to suspend the meeting, uh, to a specific date and time when we can resolve these issues, uh, and continue to discharge the legislative business of city council. Uh, does that make sense to everyone? Um, it will be a specific date and time and will be advertised, uh, in alignment, uh, with our requirements by law, um, and we will use the intervening time, uh, to identify and correct, uh, the issues that have disturbed this meeting, so hopefully they do not, uh, repeat. Okay, with that, um, I believe I had just opened the floor for council comments on the subject of the Historical Commission's recommendation of approval of the proposal, uh, to construct one, uh, the site at, is that Duke and Frederick, I believe it was? I'm not reading from my notes directly, uh, but the LGH's proposed expansion. Are there council comments? Uh, and are there comments from the public? And here I'll, uh, wait a moment.
Yes, hi, was calling in to, um, comment, ask questions about the ER expansion.
Certainly. Mr. President, we have a, uh, we have a call. Go ahead.
Okay, um, hi, my name's Tammy Rojas. I'm with Poor People First PA and the Co- uh, Coordinating Committee for the Pennsylvania Poor People's Campaign at National Home Ward Level. Yeah, I'm here with Matt and also member of the Lancaster County Home Union. Just wanted to put that out there for transparency. So, the questions that I have with the ER expansion, if I remember correctly, at the planning commission meetings, I don't know if this is the same proposal or something different, um, but during a time of questioning, from what I understand, this plan was put forth prior to even the announcement of St. Joseph's Hospital being closed. Um, so it was based on a need prior to that hospital being closed and the loss of that emergency room. So, I guess like my question is, has there been research and data collected, um, showing what the capacity of the emergency room will be after this expansion? Because we all are very familiar with how the, the ER at LGH was over capacity, the long wait times, um, the delays in EMS services. There was a very serious, um, presentation put forth at that planning commission meeting talking about the walkout, the long wait times. We are hearing times of, um, people under mental health care distress waiting 18 hours. Those with special needs with mental health care stress are waiting up to 36 hours. Um, so these are very serious times, and during the time of this pandemic, all of these issues are being exasperated. So, I'm wondering, is there data to really clarify that this particular expansion will be enough? And the reason why we're bringing this up and asking this question is because it is directly related to the rezoning we're gonna talk about coming up.
Um, Mr. Harris, if you would be so kind, uh, as to, um, reiterate the, the comment that was made, the audio, as has been this entire evening was a little troubling, but I, I'd prefer to try to answer the question.
Regarding the, uh, the other phone number?
No, the, the comment. What was the comment, uh, Mr. Harris, if you could reiterate?
Um, I'm sorry, Ms. Rojas's comment?
Yes.
She had, um, she was commenting regarding the use of the ER and that the study that was done for the basis of this expansion was done prior to the closure of, uh, UPMC and their emergency room. So, she's questioning whether or not, um, there would be additional, um, what the expectation is and what the wait times are now based on the, uh, the current situation, whether or not this will meet that demand.
All right. Um, thank you. Mr. Harris, if you would please, um, direct all further public comments to the Zoom call. We're gonna try to do it this way, 'cause the phone just isn't, just doesn't seem to be working. Um, Mr. Sykes or Mr. Lyons, uh, do you, uh, care to respond to, uh, Ms. Rojas's comment?
Sure. So, if I understood the question is, is whether the proposed expansion of the emergency department that we have in mind would be large enough to accommodate the future growth, not only with the closure of UPMC, uh, facility on College Avenue, but then other, other demands. Um, we note that this is a multi-step land development approval process. This is one vote in a series of, uh, reviews that will be conducted by, uh, this council as well, as well as the planning commission, uh, and other entities. So, this is moving along on a, on a, on a process. Um, and it's a culmination of an internal process for us, taking a look at the existing, uh, demand that we have for our emergency department, year over year over year of continued, um, growth in demand for emergency department services, as well as projected demand, um, over a number of years. Um, this, when completed, would double the size of our emergency department. So, we are opening the pipe, if you will, uh, doubling the size of that pipe to accept additional, uh, capacity, uh, and address additional demand. Thing two is, we've also expanded our urgent care network to provide throughout Lancaster County, um, additional, uh, locations for individuals to get urgent care, uh, not only just in the city, but throughout the suburbs, as well as broadening and expanding our primary care network. Again, ideally helping individuals avoid coming to the emergency department and getting primary care, um, for whatever concerns, medical concerns, addressing them early on so that they don't necessarily require emergency department care.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Um, Ms. Rojas, did you, did you hear Mr. Lyons's response?
Yeah, I was listening into that. I'm just wondering if, um, if there's data to actually show that this is gonna be adequate enough based on capacity rate. Um, and, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just honestly concerned, 'cause I know they're saying doubling the room, but based on like the data so far, just, it's got me concerned with what we are facing up ahead. I just don't know that, um, we are really aware of how this pandemic is gonna affect our community, let alone our country, um, because we're nowhere and in sight as far as even the first wave. Um, and I feel like people are not realizing that and talking about, um, you know, taking away any possibilities of health care services in, in relation to what we may be getting. I just think it's important when discussing rezoning of future property to really think deep and, and look in, and really look into things deeper, um, than I feel like we have ever as a community. I think we need to start doing that.
I'm sorry, we, we couldn't hear anything she said.
I'm sorry, we, we couldn't hear anything she said, I'm so sorry.
Ms. Rojas, I'm sorry, they're having difficulty hearing your, your response. If, if possible, could you call back at, on the Zoom number at nine two nine four three six two eight six six?
Yeah.
Mr. President, may I like to have a follow-up question for Mr. Lyons, please?
Yes, Counselor, set up.
Mr. Lyons, what's the capacity now at the emergency room?
Mr. Lyons, run you. No, I know that's it. Brian Sykes, do you know the capacity at this point, exact number?
I would, I would give you a range of 120 to 130,000. That is, well, no, where it should be is about 100,000. Where you're at is 120 to 130,000. That was what you were on track for, for pre-COVID. We are providing, uh, not just capacity for that, where you're at, but where you're growing into by 2028, which will be north of 140,000 visits per year.
No, I'm sorry, I'm, I guess I didn't phrase the question properly. What is your capacity at ER at this moment, please?
In terms of total volumes over the year? No. The number of patients?
No, there's how many beds?
How many beds? Okay, 55 beds and 10 hallway beds, so 65 total. That's actually, Br- I'm sorry, Brian Crummins, that doesn't count the, the new beds that were added back in the back. So that puts you at 64?
Yes.
So plus the hallway beds?
That's correct.
So once, uh, the expansion is done, we're, we're roughly looking at, uh, 125 to 126 beds, correct?
Uh, not that many, it'll be 96 beds too. But then there'll also be some additional services that'll be amplified, such as radiology. They'll improve their, uh, capacity as well as the trauma base. They'll add, and so you'll be able to actually move more patients through the emergency department because they won't be waiting on things like CTs or other types of radiological procedures. So hopefully there'll be, uh, be less wait.
Thank you.
Do we, um, Ms. Rojas, are you on the line calling?
Ms. Rojas, are you on the line?
Yes, I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, can hear you now, please continue with your follow-up question.
Okay, um, yeah, the, the question was kinda regarding the data, which I heard some of, um, Councilman Soto actually bring up and asked, just kinda wondering if there's record of the data to show the capacity that has, has gone in and what we are gonna be able to take if there's record of that data, like actually like collected and researched. I mean, I know the cat's out of the bag and it's been listed already on the Franklin and Marshall website, but we are doing an audit and moral budget for Lancaster City and Lancaster County, modeled, um, and inspired by what the Poor People's Campaign did for the nation. So a lot of these things we are looking into and collecting data as well. And the research that shows when you really look deeper at the level of poverty in our community, before COVID-19 hit, about 49% of the city alone was poor or low income, meaning either living in poverty or one $400 emergency away from living in poverty. And now that number is rising because of the pandemic. So I just think that when it comes to looking at the expansion, what are we gonna get out of this? Because we're now getting ready to then talk about rezoning some property away that we may need in two years, right? And I just think that we are not taking the time that is needed to really think about these issues deeply. I mean, these are the reasons why the uprisings have happened in our country lately. These are why people are out there protesting that Black Lives Matter. COVID-19 has affected people of color more so than they have others. We know that poverty is the same, we know these issues are interconnected. And I just think we need to take some time and really make sure that we are researching and really looking into this before we drastically make these decisions. And we need to look at things that, as if they are interconnected, 'cause they are. Thank you.
All right, um, thank you, Mrs. Rojas, that's, uh, that's well received and we appreciate you calling. Do we have other council comments? Okay, I'll give some additional time for the public. I will, uh, clarify while we have a moment, um, that, uh, the rezoning of the property in question will not take place or be approved this evening. What is on the agenda tonight is a first reading of that ordinance. And it would be voted on, uh, if not tabled at the second council meeting in July and, and not, not this evening. All right, uh, Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royal?
Aye.
Ms. Bakay? Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye. Uh, thank you, Mr. Harris. The other agenda items, um, which were all recommended for approval, can we, uh, talk through these and take them as a unit? They all seem to be, uh, pretty straightforward and, uh, requests by residential homeowners.
Mr. President, if I can read them into the record. It's Gershon LLC, owner of 135 East King Street, and Anthology Salon and Style Bar, the applicant, request replacement of a modern wooden entry door with a new full light wooden entry door into the ground floor commercial space at 135 East King Street. George and Jessica May, owners of 230 East Marion Street, request replacement of a garage, of a wooden garage door with a new steel overhead garage door. And Michael and Kristen Mathie, owners of 214 East King Street, request replacement of cedar shingles with standing seam copper on a pent roof above the building's ground floor facade. And all three of those were recommended for approval by the Historical Architectural Review Board.
I'll hear a motion.
They're moved.
Question.
Great, we have a motion and a second, uh, council comments. From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Royal?
Aye.
Ms. Bakay?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
All right, uh, we then move into ordinances for first reading Administration Bill Number 6, 2020.
An ordinance to change the zoning classification of certain tracts of land on North Queen Street, West Frederick Street, and North Prince Street in the city of Lancaster, Pennsylvania, from hospital complex district to high-density residential district, to mi- to mixed-use district, and to change the zoning map accordingly.
All right, um, this is an ordinance for first reading. If councilors would like to comment on it, they can, but otherwise we'll, we'll move on to the next item.
Mr. President, uh, representatives from the hospital had asked to, uh,
Yes.
To address the public.
Yes, forgive me, everybody, I'm a little fatigued, uh, from our earlier technical difficulties. Yes, uh, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Sykes, please?
Hi, this is Brian Burgess from Lancaster General Hospital. Would it be okay if John Lyons shared the screen so we can present the, uh,
Get a picture.
The deck?
That's fine.
Get a picture of you.
Yep. Great, thank you. So thanks so much for having us again for this group. We're going to present, I'm gonna do a brief presentation on the background of it, and then I'm gonna ask Mike Davis, our attorney, to, uh, to complete the presentation. So, um, uh, this is a property that the Lancaster General acquired in, uh, 2004. It is across the street from our Queen Street parking garage. Uh, we, when we initially bought the parcel, we did invest some time and money into cleaning it up, including demoing the existing YMCA on the site, uh, putting in some surface parking and a little bit of repark. And we had, uh, purchased the property as a potential, uh, because it's contiguous to our main campus, a potential expansion pathway for the hospital, what we needed. So, uh, we know, yeah, moving forward to the present time and looking at what our needs are within the hospital and on the campus, uh, investments we made elsewhere in the city and the county, we've decided that, uh, the highest and best use for this parcel, both for Lancaster General Hospital and we also think to address needs within the community, are to do a, a mixed-use development, which is inclusive of, uh, housing, um, some retail and, uh, healthcare services. And so we, uh, we looked for, uh, because the, the retail development and the residential development is not our strong suite, uh, we reached out and did an RFP for developers and tried to find a developer that would, uh, share our vision for a health-oriented campus and our vision to further beautify the neighborhood surrounding Lancaster General. And so we, uh, we ended up selecting the Hankin Group. They've developed many vibrant communities. I had a chance to visit two of them myself in Chester County. We were quite impressed. They've, uh, won a number of awards for design and quality and innovation. And, uh, another thing about the firm that we really liked, that like Lancaster General's been in the community for 125 years, Hankin also tends to hold on to their portfolio of developed projects. And so we were not only selecting a developer, uh, to bring this, uh, project to fruition, but also, uh, ideally having a long-term partner investing in the community with us. Want to turn it over to Mike Davis?
Good evening, uh, Mike Davis from Barley Snyder. This is the first reading. I just wanna note that at the second reading, um, the formal hearing that is required as part of the rezoning process under the municipality's planning code will be conducted, and our presentation at that time will be even more detailed than tonight's presentation. So I just wanted to make you aware that, I mean, some of the stuff you're hearing this evening you will hear again, uh, when we do the formal hearing, but we'll also go into, to greater depth at that time. As Brian indicated, the, the subject properties here are, there are eight different properties, the majority of which are currently zoned hospital complex. And interestingly, hospital complex is really designed to focus on hospital uses. And in fact, there are no permitted residential uses within the HC district, which is one of the reasons why we feel as though rezoning of this tract is, is appropriate. And if you could end up moving to the current zoning slide for me, that would be great. If you end up looking at this particular slide, you'll see the, the dotted red line ends up providing the outline of the eight properties that are looking to be rezoned. And again, as you can see, the majority of those properties are currently zoned hospital complex. And then two of the properties are zoned R4. I think one of the really important things to note about this particular slide is as you look to the west of the site and to the south of the site, you can see that there is already existing property that is zoned mixed-use. So therefore, the extension of the mixed-use district to this particular tract makes sense. And if we could go to the next slide, that'll further illustrate that. This is the proposed rezoning, and you can see here with the rezoning of the property to mixed-use, it is a very logical extension of the existing mis- mixed-use district that exists in the city. So I thought that was important to note. With regard to mixed-use zoning, I think it's important to focus on the fact that it provides greater flexibility in terms of the redevelopment of the site. It really permits a, a mix of residential, commercial, and institutional uses to be developed at the site. And so this would include uses that are supportive of LGH's existing operations, like medical offices or administrative offices, and would also provide uses that are supportive of the existing neighborhood, like commercial uses and additional housing and apartments. If you look at the definition of mixed-use, it specifically provides that the MU District includes undeveloped land where new mixed-use residential and non-residential development with traditional neighborhood character is recommended. And that is exactly what LGH and Hankin proposed to do at this site if this rezoning is approved. As I indicated, we'll go into greater detail in the, at the next formal hearing, but I just also wanted to note that in terms of consistency with the city and the county's land planning documents, that this rezoning request basically checks all the boxes. The City Planning Commission has unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning request, as has the County Planning Commission, so unanimous recommendations from both of those commissions. And when you look at the particular statutes and regulations that apply here, under the city's comprehensive plan, which was adopted back in 1993, it indicated that we should be looking at projects that support mixed-use development of retail, service, and other commercial uses within neighborhoods, and that we should be encouraging job creation through allowing flexible development sensitive to the needs of business. Clearly, our proposed rezoning does that. Looking at the Building on Strength: City of Lancaster Economic Development Strategic Plan, that specifically provided that for the development of the 400 through 800 blocks of North Queen Street, that we should consider additional restaurant and retail uses to build on the 300 block to support employees and visitors to LGH and to extend Queen Street Commercial from downtown to the train station. For this particular site, that plan ended up noting that the city should work with LGH to encourage restaurant and retail uses on the lower levels of any new infill development and create a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use destination. And again, that's exactly what this rezoning will facilitate, and that it's exactly what LGH and Hankin have in mind. And last but not least, as far as, uh, city and county documents, you have the Growing Together document in there that noted on its future land use map to actually designate this property as either for mixed-use and/or institutional. Again, exactly what we're looking to do. And then as far as Places 2040, which is the county's comprehensive plan, there it indicated that we should be looking to create a mix of uses and to provide a greater supply and diversity of housing types to own and to rent. And once again, that's what our proposal does. Last but not least, I just wanna end up pointing out that prior to the County Planning Commission meeting and the City Planning Commission meeting, LGH, as is its habit, reached out to its neighbors to make them aware of this request and offered to answer any questions that they had regarding this proposal. As of this evening, only one neighbor had contacted LGH, and that inquiry was not an objection to the rezoning, but instead focused on what the specific future mixed-use development of the site might look like. Obviously, at this point, those specifics are not yet finalized and would be subject to separate public meetings and hearings regarding any land development submission that would result from any rezoning of the property. And that concludes, uh, my portion of the presentation. Obviously, our team is here this evening to answer any questions which council or the public may have.
Do, uh, councilors have questions as regards to the presentation they've just seen?
Um, Council President, I just have one question. As to the development of the area, um, uh, forgive me, I don't remember what you said your name was, I'm so sorry. But, so there were going to be developers doing houses, homes to rent and also to purchase. And so have they discussed in any way what the median income would be for owning and renting property?
Yeah, at, at this point, I mean, what obviously is contemplated with what we're proposing from a rezoning standpoint is it would be a, a mixed-use development. So there would end up probably being something along the lines of a medical office building that would be supportive of LGH, that would be loaded- that would be located on the site. There would end up being commercial uses that would end up occurring on first floors of space on the property. And then there would end up being residential development associated with that that would be on the upper floors over top of the commercial use. And then there would also likely be something along the lines of some type of parking garage to support the uses on the site. At this point, in terms of median income or target numbers there, we are not into that level of detail yet on our plan as we didn't want to be presumptive that we would end up getting the rezoning that we're requesting. Once we know that the rezoning is in place, then we can end up moving forward with finalizing our concept for the site.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Craig. Other council comments?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a question.
Please.
Can you hear me? Okay. In regards to, let's say, the residential that you're speaking of, would that be more geared toward the employees since I know LGH has been for years, you know, asking for the workers and employees to move into the city so they're closer in case there's emergencies, or if it's a doctor or nurses that work in the emergency room? Is that more along the line that what you're looking at?
Hi, this is Brian Burgess again. We're contemplating primarily being occupied by residents, but we have talked to the developer about our needs as it relates to medical residents, so doctors in training that are looking for places proximate to the hospital, as well as other hospital workers and staff having the opportunity to live there. And so it's something that we've actively discussed with the developer and is a likely outcome for us.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Other council comments? I'll, can you go back one slide, please? So the current, the site is currently zoned per the map. It's currently zoned hospital complex. That's correct?
The majority of the site is zoned hospital complex. As you can see, the red dotted line really outlines the footprint of the property being rezoned. There are two parcels that are zoned R4, and those are the ones that are currently being shown with the white arrow.
Right. How did, so the site was previously the Y. And so, and maybe you mentioned this previously, how did it come then to be zoned hospital complex?
No, you guys like to have?
The property, basically after LGH ended up acquiring the property, sometime after that, they ended up approaching the city and indicating that we would like to end up seeing the HC complex put in to where it is now shown on the site. And at that point, it was with the understanding that there would probably be some direct needs in terms of the HC uses that would end up applying to that site. So that was the reason why that was asked to be put in place. Obviously, as basically the industry has evolved and as things have evolved, that designation of zoning now no longer makes sense in terms of the long-term development of the parcel.
And what was it prior to being hospital complex? Do you know?
My recollection is that it was R4.
Oh. All right. I mean, that makes sense considering the surrounding area, though that would not have been my immediate impression as to what the Y would have been zoned as. But I'm not a city planner, which I think is to everyone's, which is to everyone's betterment. Thank you. Other council comments? If there are none, I'll leave some time here for the public to make contact. All right. Hearing none. Thank you to the team for LGH for your presentation this evening. We're gonna move on and we'll see you in two weeks. All right, we have another ordinance for first reading, I believe. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordinance number, or bill, administrative bill number seven, 2020. An ordinance of the council-
Can I really hear you, Mr. Harris?
Sorry, Mr. President.
Thank you.
The ordinance of the council of the city of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, referred to as the COVID-19 Outdoor Retail Ordinance, establishing provisions pursuant to which individuals and entities may receive a license from the city of Lancaster for use of street right-of-way to conduct retail operations, establishing the conditions for operating such, I'm sorry. Establishing for operating such retail operations, allowing for the director of Public Works to designate from time to time areas within the city of Lancaster as areas reserved for outdoor retail operations, authorizing the director to promulgate rules and regulations for the issuance of licenses, for the establishment of public areas for outdoor retail operations, and for the use and utilization of outdoor retail areas and public retail areas, establishing penalties for violation of the ordinance, providing for establishing penalties for violation of the ordinance, providing for the enforcement of the ordinance by police officers, the health officer, and all code officers of the city of Lancaster, and providing for the severability of the ordinance. The title, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'll hear a motion.
It's a first reading.
Oh, of course. Right. Sorry, everybody. Thank you. So I will, however, in that case, let Mr. Campbell go ahead. Is this you, Mr. Campbell, or is this you, Chris?
No, this is me, Steve Campbell.
Yep. Mr. Campbell, please.
Yes, so thank you very much, Mr. President. This is this is following in the footsteps of the very successful outdoor dining regulation ordinance for the restaurants and for eating and beverages. The goal here is to make the same type of possibilities or opportunities available to retailers should they wish them, to be able to expand having their wares sold or presented out in the sidewalks, out in the public way of, public right-of-way of the city of Lancaster, as they may need to. We're all recognizing that it has been a difficult time for many of the businesses in downtown Lancaster and throughout the entire city. Because this ordinance, like the restaurant ordinance, is not limited to just downtown. It would be available anywhere throughout the city where there are currently retail establishments. It would have the same type of process where one would submit an application requesting the utilization of the sidewalk in front of, in front of the building and/or sidewalk or other public right-of-way space near adjacent buildings if you have the written permission of the respective owner. And it would be subject to the same types of terms and conditions that the restaurant or the open, the outdoor dining regulations are.
Okay. I think my sort of immediate question as it was with the previous ordinance is just a clarification of, since we are talking about sidewalk space, but really just an assurance that we are addressing the use of sidewalk space and making sure that ADA accessibility is being evaluated alongside each application.
Yes, that is correct. Within the regulation, it does outline required clearances for ADA ramps, for conventional passage along sidewalks, et cetera, as well as appropriate social distancing and distance away from curbs and curb cuts. And fire hydrants, et cetera.
Right. That's my question. Council?
Mr. President, I also like to add that this will also include, there are provisions in this ordinance for utilizing city-owned properties on a case-by-case basis only.
That is correct, which is also the case in the restaurant and the outdoor dining. We have not predetermined any such spaces to be used at this time, given the way it worked rather successfully with the restaurants. We're imagining that if certain retailers are interested in a certain areas that are appropriate, we would be able to look at those on a case-by-case basis, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, that's all I have.
Any other council comments?
Just to clarify, if I may, Mr. President?
Please.
Just to clarify, Mr. Campbell, and I apologize if you said this, this is citywide, correct?
Yes, it is citywide. It is not restricted to the Central Business District.
Thank you.
I also have a question for Mr. Campbell. I was reviewing the ordinance and I wanted to know are there any restrictions as to what type of retailer may request or hold one of these permits?
No, not to my recollection. It's any retailer who wishes to. I mean, I think one would have different kinds of challenges if one is a car dealership and wanted to put a car on the sidewalk, because one would have difficulty in ensuring the appropriate clearances, but it is not yet restricted in any such way.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, do we have anybody in the waiting room? I'm getting a couple of texts.
We do not have anyone in the waiting room, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Any other council comments on this ordinance in particular? Okay, we'll take some time. As we were just talking about the waiting room, if anybody would like to go ahead and call into the Zoom meeting to be let in, to comment on this issue now is the time.
Mr. President, the number for that is nine two nine four three six two eight six six.
And the meeting ID and password, Mr. Harris? We're all flying by the seat of our pants here.
Yeah, looking it up.
Oh, actually, I have it right here.
On the chat?
Yep, you don't, you wouldn't be aggrieved. Hey, everybody. Again, sorry for the technical difficulties. The meeting ID number is nine five five one five one four four five nine four. That's nine five five one five one four four five nine four. You don't need to enter a participant ID, you can just skip that. And then the password will be four seven two nine one nine. Again, the password is four seven two nine one nine. Hopefully, we'll have this all straightened out by next meeting. So now's your chance. All right, I'm not hearing any, and so we will proceed then. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. We will proceed then with administration, with the resolutions portion of the agenda with Administration Resolution Number 30 2020. Mr. Harris?
The resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster, approving a certain project to be undertaken and financed by the Lancaster Higher Education Authority on behalf of the Thaddeus Stevens College of Technology, declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the area served by the facilities of Thaddeus Stevens College of Technology to have such a project undertaken and financed by the authority.
Motion to approve. Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Bakay?
Thank you. So I mentioned this earlier in my committee report. Dan Blakenger was on the committee meeting, and I don't know that he's on tonight. Patrick?
No, he's not on this evening. So I'm both on the Higher Education Authority Board and I've talked to Dan about this project, so if there are questions, I can certainly answer those.
Terrific. And just to reiterate something I mentioned earlier, this resolution just allows the Lancaster Higher Education Authority to essentially apply for funding using the tax exempt status of the city, which is why it has to go through us, and does not involve any taxpayer money. I think that's the most important part to mention.
Yeah, the city is not liable for any of the debt that the Thaddeus Stevens College takes on. Typically, they've done their projects through the State Department of General Services because it is a state institution. They determined that this is actually the better funding option for them. The Higher Education Authority simply exists to provide institutions like Franklin Marshall College, PACC, Pennsylvania College of Art and Design, and now Thaddeus Stevens, to get the lower interest rate that they can get through the tax exemption of the Higher Education.
Right. Thank you.
Is that all?
Yeah, that's all for me.
Great. I mean, okay, fine, good, thank you. Were there any council comments? Okay, we're going to give, oh, and Mr. Harris is in the dark. We're gonna give the public a few moments to call in on this one. Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Royo? I'm sorry, Mr. Royo? Mr. Royo?
Aye, sorry.
Ms. Bakay?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye. All right, we move next to council resolution, or Administration Resolution Number 31 2020. Mr. Harris?
Resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster, approving the adoption of an amendment to the Act 537 Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the city of Lancaster.
Motion approved. Back in?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Craig?
Thank you. Council President, municipalities are required to develop and implement comprehensive official plans that address sewage disposal needs now and in the future. When a new land development project is proposed, municipalities are required to revise their official plans unless the project is exempt from planning. As of November 2019, the PA Department of Environmental Protection has been more restrictive about issuing exemptions due to the city's challenges with combined sewer overflows into the Conestoga River. These modules are often submitted at the early planning stages for development. These modules are often submitted at the early planning stages for development. Um, the warehouse project, warehouse district project, this project is located at the former Snively Doshel Lumber Yard at three fifty-one West James Street, near the corner of Charlotte and West James Street. The plan is to reuse the se- the, to reuse this several existing buildings for office and restaurant space. No plan is due to reuse the several existing for offices and re- no land development application has been submitted. So, um, is there more to add to that, Douglas?
Um, Councilor Craig, you did a fantastic job summarizing that, and I, I don't have anything else to add at this time unless there are questions.
Questions or comments from council? All right, uh, we'll hold now for questions from the public on this matter, excuse me. All right, uh, hearing none, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Ms. Bacon?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye, thank you, Mr. Harris. Administration resolution number thirty-two twenty twenty.
Resolution of-
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster, approving the adoption of an amendment to the Act five thirty-seven official sewage facilities plan for the city of Lancaster.
Thank you, Council President, motion to approve?
Second.
Um, thank you. Um, this is the sewer plan module for four to eighteen West King Street. This project is a conditionally approved land development plan as of seven-three-twenty and is an adaptive reuse of a former Lancaster newspaper building on West King Street near Penn Square. The existing buildings will be adapted to support forty-five residential units and second-floor office space while maintaining ground floor level commercial spaces. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilor Craig, um, council comments? We'll hold for comments or questions from the public.
And again, that number is nine-two-nine-four-three-six-two-eight-six-six. Meeting ID nine-five-five-one-five-one-four-four-five-nine-four. Password four-seven-two-nine-one-nine.
If you reach somebody who wants to talk to you about your vehicle's extended warranty, you've called the wrong number. Um, yeah.
We have someone-
Do we have, uh, a caller? I just saw someone new pop up on the Zoom screen.
Caller, you're calling regarding the sewer module.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, like, what y'all were talking about. I'm sorry, it's just, it's a little hard to follow. You were talking about the, um, the old, the old building in connection to where LMP left, or was it something else?
Um, thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, could you, uh, art- articulate, uh, specifically what we're considering here? And, yeah, just go for it.
Sure, um, happy to do that. Um, so there are four parcels, uh, near Penn Square on West King, the zero block of West King. Um, they are parcels between four and eighteen West King. Um, they were formerly occupied by Lancaster Newspaper or owned by Lancaster Newspaper. Um, they have since vacated those buildings and have moved to one-on-one NQ. Um, those were transferred to Zomias, who also developed the, um, Candy Factory and Seapole View Lofts and one-on-one NQ. And that, those four buildings are now going to be combined into one parcel um, for the adaptive reuse of, um, residential office and commercial spaces. What is before council this evening is, um, in, in official, an amendment to our official sewage plan. Um, because of the new uses, there will be increased sewer flows from the building compared to recent history on that parcel. So, the State Department of Environmental Protection requires that any increase in sewage above three-hundred-and-ninety-nine gallons per day has to be approved by the state, um, before the development, uh, moves forward. So, uh, that is what is before council this evening. It gets reviewed by our water and sewer engineers to ensure that we have the capacity to serve this development, and then that goes to DEP for additional review. Um, I was the one who completed the paperwork, uh, along with, um, the engineers and the applicant, and have submitted that to council for this evening's consideration.
Got it, thank you. So I guess my question would be then, has the decision then already been made that that's the kind of development that you're looking into? Um, I'm guessing that would be the case if you're looking forward to, like, being able to have the sewer capacity, is that correct?
Um, Councilor Smith-Wadeell, do you mind if I answer that?
I do not, please go ahead.
Um, so I, I would say that this is very much a, um, a high-level policy and technical decision. The high-level policy piece is whether this land development, um, conforms to our long-term, uh, plan for, uh, our city comprehensive plan, um, which we believe it does, and it aligns with our, our zoning. Um, the technical aspect of this is whether we have, um, this sewer capacity to actually serve this project going forward. Um, whether this, um, this development is, uh, compatible or not is really determined by its compliance with our zoning ordinance and, and also with our subdivision land development ordinance. Um, since this is, has already been conditionally approved by the Planning Commission, um, and I, I don't believe there were any, um, there was any need to get, uh, any review or additional approval for zoning, because it are already complied with our zoning ordinance, um, this, uh, this development is essentially ready to apply for building permits after it meets the conditions of the plan approval from the, uh, January first Planning Commission meeting, which I'm happy to share with you if you want to reach out to me, Tammy.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess the only thing that we would argue is that, again, this is just another example of yet another project that is roughly about the same, the same kind of housing within the same kind of income bracket. Again, not what, you know, the mo- the majority of the people in our community need, and I really think that we need to re-second-guess these so-called plans that we have for the city and county, because they, when they were implemented, they didn't, uh, take into consideration a global pandemic, and it didn't take into consideration that the next round of crisis is gonna be a massive amount of evictions and foreclosures. Homelessness is expected to rise by forty percent across this nation. That includes our community. And homeless encampments are already being affected. Where do we expect these people to go? And I'm just really concerned by the kind of decisions that we make. I understand the need to wanna think about things and tax revenue and stuff like that, but when are we gonna start to really think about our people? Like, we do not think about our people, we need to put our people first. And I just, I guess it just brings us back to, like, again, it's the same thing over and over again, it's the same kind of development. None of us can afford these kinds of things, and I just, I just want to express that, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Rojas, um, and thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, I'll hold now for additional comments from the public on this agenda item. Hearing none, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Ms. Bacon?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye. Oh, uh, resolution number three, number thirty-three twenty twenty.
Resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster, authorizing the submission of an application seeking funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for munis- for municipal assistance program for city comprehensive plan.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, Councilor Craig?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I really don't have a lot to say about this, it's pretty straightforward. It's funding to go into the con- comprehensive plan. Um, Mr. Delft, do you have anything to add to that?
Thank you, Councilor Craig. Um, as you said, this is, uh, pretty straightforward. We're applying for a grant in the amount of two-hundred-thousand do- two-hundred-thousand dollars, uh, to the state, uh, program, municipal assistance program. Um, if we are awarded that two-hundred-thousand dollars, it would go toward the funding of, uh, the comprehensive pla- the new comprehensive plan for the city. And as we talked about in committee, um, we, uh, that scoping process has been underway for some time, and we have not had a new comprehensive plan in the city since nineteen ninety-three. So, uh, we're excited to get started.
Can we talk a little bit too about the, um, the match the city is putting with the two-hundred-thousand?
Sure, absolutely. The, um, as part of the grant requirement, the city does have to offer, uh, matching funds for the two-hundred-thousand dollars. So, uh, we, uh, as a city administration would be committing that we are spending two-hundred-thousand dollars of our own money on that comp plan. Uh, one thing that I, I noted at committee, and I, I think it's worthwhile to, uh, state here again today, is part of those matching funds will be in the form of salaries for staff. Uh, so it's money that we're already spending on, um, Planning Bureau, uh, activities, for example. So, uh, it's something that we already had in, uh, my department budget, and, uh, we're not, we're not, uh, dedicating additional money to make that, that match.
Thank you, Mr. Delft, that's what I wanted to have known.
Okay, very good.
That's it, Council President.
Great, uh, council comments? We'll hold now for comments from the public. Hearing none, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Ms. Bacon?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye, thank you, Mr. Harris. Administration resolution number thirty-five twenty twenty.
Resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster, approving an amended capital project list to be funded by the proceeds of the City of Lancaster General Obligation Bonds Series of two thousand and eighteen.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, Councilor Bacon?
Thank you, uh, so I also mentioned this earlier during my committee report. Uh, this is a resolution that would allow us to reme- amend our water fund capital improvement plan, uh, essentially to reallocate funds that were already in that plan from projects that are wrapping up, uh, into a project that is just started. Um, Mr. Hopkins, anything to add, anything to, to, uh, to share with the, with the council as a whole?
No, just, uh, that you said it correctly, that we're reallocating dollars that had, that had been, uh, allocated to the, uh, redundant main project, forty-two-inch main project, and the, uh, automatic meter reading project, uh, to add to the budget for, uh, the South Tank Project, which has been bid out now, and we have, uh, contracted, uh, prices in place, um, as well as, uh, the engineering cost and management, uh, construction oversight, and then also an eight percent contingency that are built into total budget of eleven million, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's, uh, all for me, thank you.
Council comments? We'll, uh, we'll hold now, um, for comments from the public.
And again, that number is nine-two-nine-four-three-six-two-eight-six-six. Meeting ID is nine-five-five-one-five-one-four-four-five-nine-four, and the password is four-seven-two-nine-one-nine.
Hearing none, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Ms. Bacon?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Um, administration resolution number thirty-six twenty twenty.
Resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster, approving the adoption of an amendment to the Act five thirty-seven official sewage facilities plan for the city of Lancaster.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and, uh, second, Councilor Craig?
Thank you so much. This is a project that's being done at six sixty-one South Marshall Street. This project is proposed by Thaddeus Stevens and involves constructing a duplex structure at the corner of South Marshall Street and Skook Hill Street. On a current grass lot, land development application has been submitted. Don't have a lot to add to that.
Well, in that case, are there any council comments? We'll hold then for questions from the public. Hearing non, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Beckett.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Administration Resolution Number Thirty-Seven, Twenty-Twenty.
A Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster authorizing the administration to execute a financial assistance application on behalf of, of the city to the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, PennVest, for water infrastructure improvements, which include the following projects: emergency power upgrade for the Conestoga and Susquehanna Water Treatment Plants, and the South Tank Transmission Maines and Millersville Pike Main Replacement Project.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Uh, Counselor Soto?
Yes. I just want to add that the loan will be for ten million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, for the upgrades of the Conestoga and, uh, Susquehanna Treatment Plants. Also, the replacement main from Millersville, which is, uh, a project that was approved by council back in, uh, twenty eighteen but was never funded. That's all I have. Unless, Mr. Campbell wants to add something else?
Only that this is part of our necessary infrastructure, and these are, um, very important projects to go forward. We're very happy to be able to move forward with them expeditiously.
Okay. Um, council comments? Okay. From the public. Hearing non, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Beckett. Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Administration Resolution Number Thirty-Eight, Twenty-Twenty.
A Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster to make declaration of official intent to reimburse general operating funds used for the water infrastructure improvements consisting of the emergency power upgrade for the Conestoga and Susquehanna Water Treatment Plants and the South Water, and the South Tank Transmission Maines. Excuse me, the light just went out again.
Been one of those years.
For the Conestoga and, and Susquehanna Water Treatment Plants and the South Tank Transmission Maines and the Millersville Pike Replacement Project with funds received from the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, PennVest.
I'll hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Uh, I believe this is Counselor Soto again?
Yes. Uh, authorizing the reimbursement agreement from the PennVest loan for the city funds paid for those projects in advance of receipt of the loan funds. I'm sorry? Uh, where was I here? Uh, yes, uh, the city operating funds will be used to start those projects before Penns- PennVest loans funds are received. This will authorize the reimbursement of the operating funds from PennVest to receive once the money is available. Uh, it'd be several months before the time the city is notified it will receive the PennVest loan, and when the money is available, PennVest requires that a reimbursement agreement be in place if the city plans to spend money in advance of receiving the loan, and then repay itself from the funds. Uh, Mr. Hopkins stated that the resolution allows the city to repay itself up to full amount of the loan. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Soto. Uh, Counselor-
I don't have anything.
Uh, Mr. Campbell, do you have any additional context to provide?
I have nothing further. Um, I would ask though of Patrick if there's any nuances that, uh, need to be clarified. Patrick, I would invite him to make-
That's a dangerous question, nuance of asking of me, Steve. But no, that, uh, uh, Counselor Soto covered it well. Um, this is really what it does is provides us with the option to, uh, spend our own dollars.
Hello? Hello?
Okay. I think we're better off than, okay. Um, so, uh, this just gives us the option to spend our own operating dollars first before, uh, we get the, uh, PennVest loan dollars. It does not require us to do that, so, uh, but if we don't have this in place, we lose that option. So, uh, this is directly related to the, uh, the last resolution they just approved.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Are there any council comments? Okay, are there any comments from the public? Um, I believe we have, I thought I heard, is that Dr. Colari?
Uh, well, I'm calling in advance for the public comments. I don't have one about this one.
Oh, okay. Um, thank you, Dr. Colari. Well, just, just stay on the line-
Should I hang up and recall later?
No, no, stay on the line, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Just put yourself on mute.
Okay.
Um, all right, so we're just holding for other public comments?
While we wait, uh, Mr. President, I just wanted to, um, because it, the next public comment period is coming up, remind Mr. Harris that there was a caller from the beginning of the meeting that has been holding, um, that nee- that we need to go to as well.
Yes, I think we have, we will have a li-
Time has passed.
Yes, it has. We will have a lively, uh, second public comment period. Um, so, uh, but I, I think we'll all, we'll all make it through together. Um, if there are no other public comments regarding this item, and I'll give it another ten seconds. I'll ask Mr. Harris to call the vote.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Beckett.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye, sorry.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. All right, that concludes our legislative agenda. We're now moving into our second public comment period, typically reserved for items not on the agenda or addressed in the first public comment period. Um, I believe we do have one caller, uh, from the top of the meeting, uh, and another caller already waiting. I'll ask those persons, um, who want to call about, who missed the opportunity to call about, uh, an item already discussed. I believe there are three that I'm aware of, um, to just state that at the top of their comment, and we'll, uh, we'll let them know, um, we'll let them know to proceed. Um, here goes. Uh, Dr. Colari, I know we have you on the line. Is there somebody else calling from the top of the meeting on the line?
Yes, this is Matt Johnson calling about the recognition of Sheila Mastropietro.
Oh, great. Um, thank you. Mr. Johnson, please proceed. Mr. Johnson, please proceed.
Sure. Matt Johnson, Mulberries, North Mulberry Street, Lancaster. Uh, thank you, I've just been on for the last hour and a half, and this is, uh, 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 a troubling time for all of us, I'm sure, and technology hits us all, so, uh, totally glad to be able to just say my piece very quickly. We did have a lineup of about five people, partner organizations, uh, people that have worked for Ms. Ma- Ma- Ms. Ma- Mastropietro, um, community members, and most importantly refugees that Sheila helped, uh, resettle here, uh, set up to talk, uh, you know, technology, what it is, got in the way, but I just wanted to make sure to speak on behalf, so it was part of the official record, to say thank you for recognizing her for her 33 years of experience, uh, in the city. Uh, we have been called the refugee capital of America, and that doesn't happen without Sheila. 33 years from 1987, started out as a single person, one-person office in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, as an extension of Philadelphia, and now has 28 employees, thousands of refugees from some of the hardest-hit areas in the entire world, um, as well as, um, just bringing to the attention of the Lancaster community, which has been a welcoming community since the 1600s, uh, the hardest-hit people in the world. And so I really appreciate that you have recognized her in this way, and I just wanted to make sure that it was a part of public record that I can think of very few people in the history of our city that have put us on the map the way that Sheila has, and I can think of very few people who have, who deserve the recognition and honor, uh, of, of making, uh, Lancaster home to thousands of people that are, are fleeing distress and disaster across the world. So, I once again appreciate that you recognize her thus. Uh, I know that I'm completely inadequate to speak on behalf of people who have been in her employ for years and people who have been resettled, uh, because of her efforts, but, uh, I guess I just stayed on long enough to be able to hopefully try to inadequately say how much we appreciate the recognition and how much we think that Sheila deserves. Uh, you know, if the key to the city existed, I think she would be a good candidate. So, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Typically, uh, when we pass resolutions like this, um, we give a copy to the person in question. I think in this instance, um, we would be happy to present a signed copy, uh, to Church World Service, uh, so that you all might sign or adorn it in any way that you see fit, uh, before delivering it to Mrs. Mastropietro yourselves.
That would be wonderful. Thank you for that opportunity, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know a second public comment is not usually for this, so appreciate it.
Yeah, we're all just figuring it out. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
No problem, thank you.
Next, uh, up, we have, uh, Dr. Antonio Calori. Dr. Calori?
Uh, yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Good. Uh, I, I am actually calling in about a couple of the items that, uh, council has already reviewed and approved, and I was trying to call in on both of those times, and somehow was not able to get through. Uh, so if I could speak to them, uh, now, uh, I would like to do that.
Uh, please, uh, please proceed, Dr. Calori.
Okay. So, the first item is the LGH rezoning, uh, item, and I'm sorry that the gentlemen were here, uh, and no longer here, uh, but I have a ca- a concern about, uh, uh, that. And, uh, uh, it's a concern that I think is best expressed actually to city council rather than, uh, to them, because it concerns, uh, a matter of what's in the public interest, and I think, uh, you know, they are interested in their, their own affairs, right? What's in their best interest, which is totally understandable. The city council is actually interested in the public interest, so, um, uh, one, uh, thing about it is that I think there is strong circumstantial evidence. I don't think it's final evidence, because there's more research to be done, but there is strong circum- circumstantial evidence right now that the area around LGH has shown, uh, significant gentrification patterns. Uh, you know, gentrification varies, there are lots of ranges, you know? It doesn't all have to be, uh, of the form, uh, that we see in Brooklyn, right? Or in some of the very, very expensive places. In a place like acid, doesn't look necessarily like that, but in relationship to this community, it's gentrification. Uh, and there is strong evidence about that happening around LGH. Um, so when they talk about commercial and residential expansion and working with, uh, developers with that experience in developing, uh, areas of the city that have already exhibited patterns of gentrification, uh, that have left, um, you know, the housing stock bias towards the upper income level, uh, that have created, uh, a poverty of affordable housing, really affordable housing. Um, I think that, uh, and I would hope that city council would take a serious look at whether what LGH is proposing to do might add to those patterns of gentrification and take away from any meaningful effort at providing more affordable housing. Uh, in relationship to that, I don't really understand, uh, I'm sure it's legal, but I don't really understand what it is that a hospital, you know, given kind of an upper profit status, because it is a hospital and it provides public services, is doing developing areas, commercial areas, residential areas. Uh, there's something a little bit unseemly about that. Uh, I understand that's part of the way things are done, but we are in a stage where we've all said that things need to be done differently, because we have seen things fall apart. Uh, the evidence of COVID, and then the demonstrations around RACE, uh, have made that clear, and everybody has said that now is time to do things differently. So, this may be a place to begin to do things differently and to think about development projects differently. So I would urge you to really be informed, do whatever you need to do, to be fully informed about, you know, gentrification forces are ready at work, uh, in that area, and, uh, uh, answering the question about whether the project that LGH is developing might add to those gentrification forces before you approve the rezoning. The second thing about that is that in the prior LGH element, the one about the emergency room expansion, Ms. Ross had asked about, you know, is, i- i- is there data on what the need is for emergency room capacity? And the gentleman from LGH said, "Well, you know, this is a long-term project. We're looking into expanding, this is just phase one." Um, so it's pretty clear that there's still more work that needs to be done, uh, with medical services. So, one question that I would have is, why are they thinking of using this property for commercial and residential, uh, purposes when they know that there is more room for medical services for an expansion of, uh, emergency room services? They've already said that. Uh, how can, how can they proceed and how can city council allow them to proceed with this residential and commercial, uh, property expansion without, uh, e- even having heard what their specific plans are about expanding emergency room services, which are badly needed, uh, in, uh, the city and in the community at large? So those are the two, uh, comments about LGH. Uh, as I said, I'm sorry that those two gentlemen are not here, uh, anymore, uh, because they might have said something in response to this. Uh, but as I said also before, I don't think it's really up to them to worry about this stuff. I think it's really up to you, city council, to worry about this stuff. Okay, that's about LGH. The other comment that I wanted to say something about is, um, the comprehensive plan. And I'm glad that the city is doing a comprehensive plan. Uh, I know, um, I don't, I don't know what city council already knows about it. I only know what I heard, you know, in the meeting here. Uh, and I didn't hear anything about the specifics, uh, right, uh, of the comprehensive plan. What exactly, you know, uh, the, uh, plan would look at? Uh, who would staff the plan? How the plan will be done in consultation with the community? Who in the community is going to be consulted? And who in the community is not going to be consulted? Uh, is it going to be, uh, just the people who have been behind these types of plans that have given us an unequal city, uh, that, you know, has been gentrifying and making it more and more difficult for working people to be able to live in the city? I think there is lots of evidence of that. Um, you know, the people who have been involved in producing these gentrification plans, right? These development plans have been giving us an outcome which we now say we are uncomfortable with, right? So if, they are the ones that are gonna be, again, having input, and the primary input, about what the comprehensive plan ought to be about, we're probably gonna end up with the same outcome. So, from the point of view of city council, if I were on city council, I would, you know, ask to see how the planners, right, are going to consult with the people in the community in a different way than they have done in the past. Because unless that happens, the same, right, outcome is going to occur again. So, I'm glad that there is a comprehensive plan, does it have a social justice component in it? Who gets to speak as to what social justice is in the development of a city? Who, who was going to have input in this plan? There was no discussion of that at all, but I think city council could well have such a discussion, and I would hope that city council would have such a discussion before it moves on finally approving a comprehensive plan. If everything is in place, that's great. You know, if there is no more room for input because everything has been considered, that's wonderful. Uh, and then the people can have more competence, right, in the plan. Uh, but if the plan happens without this deep community conversation about what the priorities are and the modes of communication and the modes of input are, then the people, you know, can legitimately say that they really didn't have much to say about this. That's kind of going to fall short of the demogra- democratic ideal. So, those are my comments about those two items.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Calori, for both of those incredibly thoughtful comments. Um, I'll try to respond to them, uh, briefly, and I'm certain that I won't do them justice, uh, just given time constraints. Uh, first, um, your comments about, uh, LGH are well-taken. Um, as we, uh, consider the, uh, rezoning item, uh, the two gentlemen will be here next week, but really, uh, it's up to us to ask questions like, where does, uh, you know, where does housing and genuinely affordable housing fit into not just this development project, but any other development project, uh, that comes before it? So thank you for that note. And, um, on the, on the second, um, we are just gearing up to get back into, uh, the comprehensive, uh, planning, uh, process. Um, I briefly engaged with Mr. Delph's department, um, uh, and we discussed, uh, equity as a, as a chief value in the, in the process, and I hope that, um, as you say, uh, council and the administration be attentive to those things as the competency man moves forward. Um, thank you again, Dr. Calori, uh, for your really thoughtful comments. Um, my apologies personally that you weren't able to, uh, get logged into call earlier. Um, all right, what else do we have in terms of public comment?
Okay, thank you very much.
Do we have anybody else that would like to make public comment? I'm seeing, uh, that there's a question in the chat. Um, typically, uh, public comment is limited to three minutes. I'm making some allowances this evening due to our technical difficulties.
Okay. Uh, hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Hey, Matthew, yes, we can.
Hey, you doing? My name's Matthew Rosing, I'm, I'm on a, uh, on the 200 block up of West Vine Street. I'm also the co-coordinator of Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee with Put People First PA. Um, my comment, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. We, we asked city council, the old city council, to grant us public meetings about poverty in our, in our, in our city. We are asking this again. Right now, we're in a situation that is just gonna get worse and worse and worse for many, many people in this city. You know, uh, Tammy mentioned earlier that, uh, the homeless rate is looking to shoot up to fo- by 40% across this country. We're looking at people without work, we're looking at people that aren't gonna have homes, we're looking with people that aren't gonna be able to access the healthcare that they need due to money constraints, other constraints. We, and with this comprehensive plan being brought forth soon, we feel that the community really needs their voice to be heard on this. You know, uh, Antonio said it, we cannot go back to business as usual. Business as usual was not working for millions of Americans before this pandemic started. And this pandemic is just showing the depths of disparity that we can fall into, and this is just the beginning of it. So, I'm asking you, um, as a city council, if, if we could please get together and have some community, uh, community meetings on poverty, so we can really break down the systemic issues that are, that are facing us and that we can move on together, and we can move forward together and create a ci- create a city that, you know, we all, we, we all pride ourselves on being the refugee capital of the world, of the United States, and all this and that. But there are so many people in this city that feel left behind, forgotten, and, and we need to, you know, we need, we need to have our voices heard. And thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Rosing. Um, uh, I appreciate you taking the time, uh, to call. Um, you know, uh, as you know, public town hall meetings are a bit of a challenge right now, uh, but provided we can zero in on some of our technological issues, uh, digital ones, um, are not, are not out of hand. So, uh, thank you for, uh, thank you for raising that, that's a, that's a good idea. Hold on a second, I'm in the dark again. Uh, as I was saying, um, yeah, that's, um, uh, a good idea, Matthew, and, and one that we should pursue. Um, thank you, and thank you for taking the time to call. Um, do we have, uh, other public comments? I'll hold for 30 seconds before moving on.
Hi, I wanna ask Stephanie Agwiston, I represent the Lancaster County Homeless Union. Um, I have a question about why they're kicking people out of Binns Park and about the bailout for the Marriott.
Uh, please continue, Ms. Agwiston. Ms. Agwiston, you're now muted.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Agwiston, um.
Yes, Tiffany, please continue. Ms. Agwiston, you can continue if you would like.
I was continuing.
Oh, okay, we just, we couldn't hear you on this end.
I have a question about, uh, I have a homeless.
Um, Ms. Agwiston, again, you are muted, at least you appear as muted on the screen, so we cannot hear your comments.
I'm sorry, my name is Stephanie Agwiston. I'm the president of the Lancaster County Homeless Union, and I was wondering what you guys are doing about the homeless down at Binns Park with nowhere to sleep, and also about the Marriott bailout.
Um, well, uh, I can answer the second question, um, and I will, uh, allow, uh, the mayor, if she would like, to answer the first. Um, we, uh, are, at this juncture, um, me having become aware of it very recently, uh, we have nothing to do, and frankly, I think, uh, no interest, um, in, uh, bailing out the Marriott. They are requesting funds, um, from the, uh, Lancaster County Commissioners, from their, uh, COVID-19 CARES Act funding, um, over, uh, over which we have, uh, no control or, uh, or jurisdiction. Um, we're not bailing out the Marriott. Uh, I, for my own part, don't have any interest in, in bailing out the Marriott. Uh, if, uh, Mayor Sarachi would like to answer, uh, the question about, um, how the city administration is, is responding, uh, in Binns Park, she's free to do so.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I just wanna clarify that it's not a question about bailing out Marriott, it's about, uh, the convention center itself, uh, which was publicly financed, uh, and is, uh, related to the Marriott, but also related to, uh, downtown businesses and restaurants and so on that attract large, uh, gatherings. Um, so just wanted to clarify that. And as it relates, uh, to the homelessness, uh, in Binns Park, um, we, uh, have, uh, been working in partnership with the county as well as the Lancaster Homeless Coalition to address homelessness, but moreover, there are larger issues related to drug and alcohol addiction uh, that, uh, we are trying to work through, um, at this time. And, uh, if you would like, I can, uh, be happy to connect with you if you would like to call my office at 2914701 to go into greater detail.
Okay, that would be great. Um, also, if we could have a meeting so I can talk more about the Lancaster County Homeless Union with you guys, I'll be even better.
Uh, okay, great. Um, thank you, Ms., uh, Ms. Agwiston, um, for your comments, um, and, uh, yeah, I hope the, uh, that y'all will follow up to have a meeting. Um, are there other public comments, uh, at this time?
Once again, Mr. President, uh, the number to call in is 929-436-2866. Meeting ID is 955-1514-4594, and the password is 472919.
All right, I'm going to tentatively, uh, proceed to the report of the mayor, uh, Mayor Sarachi.
Given the late hour, I have no report, Council President.
Thank you. Um, I also, uh, am going to forego my report this evening. Council comments. Um, all right, y'all, uh, we, uh, we made it through. Um, my sincere apologies to all of you and to everybody, uh, at home or who tried to call in, uh, for the persistent technical difficulties. Uh, we're really gonna, gonna do our best to have this together and down pat, uh, by the next meeting. Um, but thank you to everyone who showed, uh, persistence in making their voices heard. And with that, I will hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone. Thanks for hanging in there, guys.